You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the April 10, 2023 meeting of the Long Beach Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
So welcome to the account of Long Beach Council meeting. Let's stand as well. Please. As far as opening remarks, going to add one agenda item, and that would be the positive paper. And that's going to go, well, I'll tell you when that comes, but it's under new business. And then we're going to rearrange the agenda a little bit to do the bids right after we approve the minutes. So that's it for my opening remarks. I cast for motion to approve the minutes of the town council meeting of March 13, 2023.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, the only amendment I want, that's the fire commission meetings have been changed to five o'clock. That's actually five thirty on first.
Well, I get a little, I get a little revolt at our last fire commission meeting. I apologize. I don't know how I screwed up, but at any rate, I hit five o'clock time, then I got to Deanna and said it was five thirty because of our website and the. So everybody is, it sounds like the majority of the fire commission is ready for five. So if you want to leave it at five in those meeting minutes, and then we'll change the website and the Zooms, I apologize.
I will change, I will change the Zoom. If you want to take care of the website, that'd be, and then, so I take away my amendment. There's a motion in second, all favor say aye. Aye. All right, and then I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the special council meeting minutes of March the 20th, 2023.
So moved.
Second. So all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now it's.
Good evening, everybody. I have been instructed to read these slowly and clearly, so please bear with me because there's a lot of bids. First of all, the 2013 Ford police car, we have 12 bits. Open and read, so. Did I say 2013? Sorry. 2013. Okay. First bid is from Rick Piper, and Rick bids $3,077. Deanna Carlson is our great deputy clerk who takes minute, she gave me.
So Tim, we probably don't need to know who, just, just the amounts. And then at the end, we can, then we can at the end announce who won.
Okay, okay. All right, the next one is for $2,867. It's very good right now. $4,551. And that's bid for the four. $1,888, 18 minutes. I do. All right, so it looks like the $5,000 bid went on, but you guys will let me know on that, or talk among yourselves, and that's your quote.
And Tim, who put in that $5,000 bid?
That is for Melissa Calcaris and Joseph Calhors, quote from Hudson, Indiana. I'm sorry for saying your name wrong, but that's 5,000 from Melissa and Joseph.
Just, just for the information to everyone, either on Zoom or in attendance tonight, the highest bidders tomorrow, we will reach out to you. We'll contact you in reference to the payment arrangements for the title and picking up of the VFO. So just in case you're curious, the next day we will get ahold of you.
This is your information. This is going to hang one.
Yeah. Okay, next is for the Chevy Suburban. We have 22 bids for the Chevy. Thank you very much for helping me. First bid is for $5,187.50. More to come. Twenty, $23,000.
$23,000?
$3,700. Right? Last one, maybe, right? Last one, so far the $23,000 has it, $10,000. So by my estimation, 23, 23,000 takes it for, from auction bid Chevy, Mr. James Borman. So I will have these for you all. Thank you.
Okay, um, I'm going to do one other change with the agenda. We've got our town accountant on Zoom, so let's move public safety building financing decision slash Baker Tilly up before the reports, if that's okay, should be all right, right?
That's under unfinished.
Yeah. So we had a Zoom call with Baker Tilly today, and Baker Tilly basically recommended that we go with First Merchants. That would be a fixed rate loan, there'd be no market, market rate, no market risk. And Carl, I believe that was your recommendation also, correct?
It is, yes. To go with First Merchants fixed rate of 4.68% over 20 years.
So I would make a motion that we go with that. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
My only comment is, I'd prefer we go with the bank loan because it's more flexible. We can refinance at any time. The risk, of course, is with merchants, it's a fixed rate for 20 years. Horizon Bank is a fixed rate for 10 years, but it's about 25 or so basis points less, so it's less interest over a 10-year period. It would save the town about $60,000, $57,500 according to Carl in interest cost, but there is a risk because rates could go up in 10 years, but I gotta believe in the next 10 years, rates are going to go down. So with the, with the fixed rate, we can't refinance until eight or 10 years pass, whereas with the Horizon Bank loan, we can refinance at any time, and we can prepay at any time also with no penalty. So that's, that's where I stand on it.
Carl, do you have anything to add?
The only thing I will add is if, I'm not sure about the re, being able to refinance it with Horizon, I guess that would be a question we'd have to ask them. If we go in with a 10-year rate, I think it's locked in for 10 years. I don't know that they would have the option to refinance or to re.
We could refinance it at any time. We can prepay at any time. We could, we could pay as, as the agreement is, or if we end up at the town have a surplus of a couple hundred thousand some year, we could put another 200,000 or whatever on the loan at no penalty. And that, that, that's the only reason, you know, I'm willing to take a risk because it's more flexible. In 10 years, if all else stays the same, we're going to have the loan paid down by half, so, roughly half. So that's, that's my only comment. But I've been, I've been assured that we could prepay or pay at any time during the 10 years. We aren't locked in for 10 years like we are with the bond. Plus, if we do refinance, it'll be at less cost also than have to go through the whole procedure again with advertising for the bond and all that, what you have to do with the bond.
Carl, any other comments?
No, I, I think my email to the council, my both emails, I think outline kind of my recommendation. I don't disagree with Mr. Coker that, you know, in 10 years, you, you have the ability, and it sounds like Horizon's given him the verbal that they, you could refinance it with them at any point. If we were to refinance outside of Horizon, we would need to pay a 1% penalty. All I was really trying to look at is protecting the town from future rate increases after 10 years, and that was my really principal concern at this time.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, let's do it by hand. Raise your hand if you're an aye. So three ayes, Mary, you're an aye, I'm sorry. Opposed? So four to one, it passes. All right.
So we went with?
We went with the First Merchants. And so Carl, can we have you get ahold of First Merchants and get that moving along?
I will, and we'll need to coordinate with both Chris and Jimmy Shanahan and First Merchants on a closing date, but I'm thinking in two to three weeks, we could close on, on the bond.
Great, thanks Carl, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Yep. Committee reports. Police Department, Police Commission, Town Administrator, the chief.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, before I go through the monthly reports, it is my honor that I would ask that Brandon Hughley, please join me at the podium. The Long Beach Police Department is the only police department in La Porte County that currently has a Reserve Deputy Marshal unit. What this unit is, is a very dedicated group of men who volunteer their time to assist the police department at no cost to us. They volunteer their time at a minimum of eight hours per month. They go through law enforcement training, no different than what any of us in law enforcement have to go through each and every year. However, they are not mandated by state law to go through the entire law enforcement academy because some of their arrest powers are somewhat limited compared to an officer who is doing this as a full-time career. We are very honored and blessed to have with us tonight Brandon Hughley, who has recently returned home after serving his country with the United States Army, which Brandon, we are very grateful and thankful for your service. Since 2017, he has served in military intelligence, where he has prepared and sourced out intelligence products to support the combat commander. He has established and maintained systematic, cross-referenced intelligence records and files, where he will receive and process incoming reports and messages. He determines the significance and reliability of any incoming information. This is then integrated to incoming information with current intel holdings, and he also prepares and maintains the situation map. And a lot of this was done while he was deployed overseas in Afghanistan. He would also conduct, analyze, and evaluate intelligence holdings to determine the changes in enemy capabilities, the vulnerabilities, and also the probable, probable courses of action of the enemy. During this time, he was given top secret military clearance. I'm sure there's things that Brandon couldn't share with us tonight, but I'm very proud that since his return to La Porte County, he is a La Porte County native, he resides about a half mile outside of our community. His father is a very proud member, Rob Hughley, who is seated there to the very far left. Rob is also a Reserve Deputy Marshal with the Long Beach Police Department. Previously, he served as a Reserve Deputy with the Michigan City Police Department and the La Porte County Sheriff's Department. And then I was very blessed, when I came here, Rob called me and said, he initially started with me in Michigan City, says, I want to join you again here in Long Beach, and I was happy to bring him on board, and now we're very honored to have his son Brandon with us tonight. So with that, I would ask our clerk treasurer, Tim Perry, to please swear Brandon in. I'm going to briefly read this top paragraph to Brandon, and then Clerk Perry will pick up from there. State of Indiana, County of La Porte, Town of Long Beach, I, Mark Swistec, Chief Marshal of the Long Beach Police Department, County of La Porte, State of Indiana, dare hereby constitute and appoint Brandon Hughley of La Porte County, Indiana, to be my Deputy Marshal within and for the Town of Long Beach, and to do and perform any and all duties and acts that may be required of him as a Deputy Marshal with the Town. And then hereby signed by me on today's date, April 10, 2023, and I would ask Clerk Perry to come forward, and he'll do the swearing in.
Raise your right hand, please. Aye, say your name.
Aye, Brandon Hughley.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution?
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
Of the United States and the Constitution of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully and honestly discharge.
That I will faithfully and honestly discharge.
My duties as a Reserve Deputy Marshal.
My duties as Reserve Deputy Marshal.
Of Long Beach, La Porte County, State of Indiana.
Of Long Beach, La Porte County, State of Indiana.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you for your service. Welcome to Long Beach, Brandon.
Thank you for your four-year commitment to United States Army, serving again abroad in Afghanistan. I know some of the stories during the initial interviews when Sergeant Schooly and myself had met with Brandon, Brandon actually reached out to us wanting to become a Reserve Deputy Marshal, and it's very scary to hear some of the things that he was faced with away from his family and from all of us. So again, thank you for your service to the country and welcome back, and thank you for your service now to the Town of Long Beach. So welcome aboard. Also, anyone that's either watching tonight or in the audience, I still have one position that is open for the Reserve Deputy Marshal position, so I'm hoping that Joy, you will get me your application in the morning. I'd love to have you aboard, so. On a serious note, Brandon will be joining new recruits at the Michigan City Police Department. They're getting ready to hire four to six new recruits. Brandon will be joining them. He'll be going through TASER certification, firearms, pepper spray, a 40-hour pre-basic course, criminal law, and then he's got to go through a minimum of 100 hours of training with us as well, where he'll be riding with the Deputy Marshal here at all times, and then eventually down the road, he can go out and ride on his own. But he's got a lot of field training officer training to do, and I know he'll do it exceptionally well. On the monthly reports, the Town of Long Beach Police Department for the month of March, we had responded to 271 calls for service when compared to 153 calls for service in 2022 for an increase of 118 calls. During the month of March, 24 incident reports were documented, a total of 17 individuals were arrested, two felony arrests, one was for a felony habitual traffic violator, the other was for an arrest warrant for felony theft. Five individuals were arrested for operating a motor vehicle while intoxicated, nine misdemeanor arrests for traffic-related offenses. Also, we had two 19-year-olds that were found to be in consumption of alcohol on Lakeshore Drive and were arrested for underage drinking violations. For the month, it was quite active for our staff. The weather was on our side, so we kind of stayed busy. In reference to anything major, there's nothing that I have of concerns to pass along other than, we are getting into the season where more and more people are coming into the town. I cannot say enough, do not leave valuables in your vehicles, please lock your vehicles. We did have in Dunland Beach, which is one of the other communities that we policed last month, we had a handgun that was stolen from a vehicle, a truck. The gun was left in the truck unsecured and was obviously stolen, so I can't share enough to please lock your vehicles. On the Town Administrator's side, we're getting ready for leaf pickup. We'll be talking about that briefly tonight, approving the invoice coming for that. Have your leaves out to the curb at the edge of your property by April 23rd. We will begin a one-time pass through the town starting on April 24th through April 28th. That will conclude the leaf pickup for the spring. We will not be picking up leaves after that. This week, the Public Works team, you will see them over at the community center in the playground. We will be removing the vegetation that's growing, removing the leaves, some of the previous mulch, and we'll be applying certified mulch that is playground certified, so we will be readdressing the playground this week. At the water tower, we now have the retaining wall that's up. You'll see there's a parking spot there. The reason for that was for our water department staff and vendors, when they're up there working, to allow them to pull off of the roadway safely without blocking Foxdale, and I think that was done quite well for the $17,000 expenditure. The second quote we had for that was over $75,000 to do that work, so we're very pleased on how that turned out. And other than that, we're working on spring cleaning. Everything's going well, unless there's any questions, that's all I have to report. So thank you again for all the time.
Okay, Volunteer Fire Department, Tom Yump.
Thank you very much. For the month of March, the Long Beach Fire Department responded to nine calls, four on the fire side, five on the medical side. Year-to-date, we've responded to 30 calls versus 24 from a year ago. Average response time in fire calls is 4.4 minutes. Average response time in medical calls is 4.2 minutes. For every medical call, we're averaging five personnel at every, every medical call for every fire call, including alarms, we're averaging eight people at these, at these calls. A few things just to, to call out, I'd like to thank members of our department, Alex Pollak and Larry Pollak, for providing CPR certified training to the entire staff of Long Beach Country Club during the month of March. Alex is a certified CPR instructor and took it upon himself to help the Long Beach Country Club employees get all recertified, so we're happy to provide that service when we can. From a training standpoint, last week, we took, we had the option or the opportunity to take advantage of Michigan City's training facility. We did smoke training for vent enter isolate search tactics. In fact, we leveraged a new smoke machine that the fire department purchased out of our fundraising dollars to help us to, to do proper training. So it's really interesting how you can smoke up an environment with, with the right, the right toolset. So tonight, we're doing driving training and driving safety awareness, especially as we're getting into the season with a lot more people in, in the area. Our medical team did SIDS training this past month and continues to, to stay on top of things. Last thing I'll tell you, just a couple of reminders, we are now into the spring season. As we know, we had some pretty significant thunderstorm activity over the last couple of weeks. My, my plea to the community is, if there is a power line down, please don't go near it. Call 911 and, and stay away and keep people away from those. They are very dangerous. You don't know if it is, it is a hot wire or, or not, and if you step to a hot wire, we won't have time to ask you questions. So please, you know, please be, be mindful that a lot of times trees will fall on wires. They will be sparking, they may catch fire. Please call 911, and we will take care of isolating the area, getting the power company there. But it, you know, we had some pretty active storms the last couple of weeks, and so we're, we're definitely interested in making sure you're, you're safe. The other, other reminder around carbon monoxide, we had a number of carbon monoxide calls during the, during the winter season. My plea is that, you know, you, you put carbon monoxide detectors in your, in your houses on every floor of your house and check the batteries on those. They only last five to seven years, but they are, they're a lifesaver. With the summer months coming, I know windows will be open, people, you know, carbon monoxide may not be as big of a concern for some. Golf carts are another thing to be concerned about. We do get a number of calls for golf carts that charge in garages, and if they have an overheating cycle, they will kick off a hydrogen gas, which is not, which is deadly to, to humans, and it will kick off your carbon monoxide detector. So please be mindful, if you're charging your, your golf carts in a, in enclosed garage next to your house, if it does. to your house, if it does do an overheat cycle, you could be emitting some gases. So just wanted to pass that along as we're getting into the summer, but these are some of the common calls we get during this time of year. Fire Commission, John, off to you.
So we held our Fire Commission last week. We had a couple, three different items in terms of discussions. Basically, we centered on the public safety building. We spent some time on some of the design criteria issues that are coming up, cost structures for those design criteria issues, which we hope to have a full report after our meeting in the first week of May with the contractor, our next progress meeting. We talked about the financing, which we completed this evening. Thanks to the council for that vote this evening. We do have another payment to discuss a little later in the evening relative to holiday second payment. We talked about the building corporation and I know Chris is going to work with Shanahan, the bond counsel, and we'll get that, put all the i's dotted and t's crossed. We discussed the fire engine financing. As you all know, that fire engine is not due for another 12 to 16 months, so we've got plenty of time on the financing, but we don't know whether we want to just dish that off to the next council or we want to try to consummate some sort of a deal in the next six months or so. So we'll have to just keep that on the agenda. May a cope again for the meeting, Snafus. We decided to change the traditional Fire Commission meeting to follow the Police Commission meetings on the first Thursday of the month. So from here on out, the first Thursday of the month at 5:00 PM here at the Town Hall will be the Fire Commission meetings. That's all I have.
Great. Public Works, Mary Lou.
Public Works, we met on March 27th and Mark covered most of our items. The only thing we have to talk about is under unfinished businesses, vacant lots, so we'll do that on that area. And our next meeting is April 24th. Oh, we did hire an office manager for the Water Department. I was going to cover that in Human Resources, so I will.
Okay. Park Board, Joy.
So you're going to become a police officer?
That's the first I heard of that.
Will you get a bullet in your pocket?
Yeah, if I can have a bullet in my pocket, I'm in.
The Park Board met on March 28th. We discussed improvements at the stops. Stop 16 is going to get a replace and repair of some boardwalk sections and a bench. The labor at stop 16 is always done by the residents and they're going to do that again this year, so huge thank you to them. Stop 19, we're enlarging the stroller wagon pad area and adding a bench at the bottom of the stairs. And we needed to have some sprinkler heads removed from town property, and I think the chief took care of that with Mrs. Brennan on the west side there. Stop 21 and stop 23, we'll finally have our contractor back to do the safety railings. And this was really just finishing up the town project when the shoreline got shored up. So they're going to be doing that in April. And stop 29, we're doing a replace and repair to shore up the steps this year. We'll be doing more extensive work there next year. Permit applications have been submitted for all five of those. We had another question about stop 29. The council asked us or tasked us with identifying encroachments at the stops, and we feel there's an encroachment at stop 29 to the west where the adjacent homeowner has planted trees on town property. However, we can't find an existing town survey to definitively show the encroachment. So I don't know if the town wants to get a survey done.
So I'll make a motion that we get a survey done of stop 29 so that they can proceed. Is there a second?
I'd second that. I'd make the motion that it be a state survey so we can get some states down there so that we can actually see where the line is.
Would the homeowner have done one prior to that?
We have some from, ones done on either side, but they don't give any measurements.
Okay.
Those motions, second, any other discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So who's going to do that? I'm sorry. The Park Department's going to get the survey done? Or do you need help?
Sure. We'll do it. The ADA stop at stop 15 was discussed. The Park Board is going to take the lead on this project and move forward with the global engineering to design the project as well as manage the 2023-2024 COSA grant application. We were turned down in 2019 because we have not yet completed stop 24. Now that that's complete, we're going to try again. So the Park Board will put the cost for the engineering and getting the, seeing if we'll qualify for the grant. I don't think construction would begin until 2024, at least like the fall of 2024. The question I have is the idea of the project is to get people with disabilities to the edge of town property. We're not planning on going any further than that because we don't own the property. So our plan would be to have a boardwalk that comes all the way out at stop 15 to the end of the dune bluff, and then there would be a viewing area. We're also going to incorporate for police ATV access, something at that area as well. So we're just in the preliminary stages, but I want to make sure we're all on the same page as to, nobody thinks we're going to get people to the water's edge.
I think it'd get, so they're not going to get to the beach or will they get down below the bluff?
They won't get down below the bluff.
Okay.
Only because we thought that's not our property, so we're not planning anything there.
Well, it'd be analogous to any other stop, right, where we have stairs going down or not?
We have stairs going down, but I'm not sure any go beyond the bluff.
I think the engineer can maybe address that for us once he gets to the point where you've actually got.
John, turn your microphone on, sorry.
I think the engineer can address that for us once he gets his, because he'll do a little survey work as well and then he can determine where that boundary line is and we can decide after he's taken a look at it where the elevations are and whether it makes sense to get, as far as where you're thinking. I agree, if we're going to have access, we can.
Yeah, maybe they can do both, one with just the viewing platform up above and one with access down, and then we could see what the difference is in cost and decide.
Okay, we can go that way. Now, are we going to have to go to the BZA since we're out beyond the 106?
I don't, well, we'll have to find out. We'll think about that, but, you know.
Okay.
The good news is the BZA doesn't cost you if you're the Park Board, so that's good.
Okay.
You save the $200, $300 fee.
Okay. The Park Board also had the trees in the park across from Town Hall trimmed at a cost of $7,800. I think it looks really nice. I don't know if anybody noticed. And beach cleanup will be April 22nd. Is that Earth Day? I think we're combining with Michigan City, and I think it'll be just like the previous years, we'll have garbage bags at each of the stops and people can go down there, pick up garbage, just leave them at the stops, and then somebody comes by later and picks it all up.
Joy, what time are we going to start? Would that be 8:00 AM that day?
We usually start at 8:00 AM, yes.
Okay. And so I'm going to have probably at least two to three staff members that'll come with the ATVs to help as well and assist with getting some of that larger items up to the roadway for you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
And Joy, as I think about it with the stairs, you know, the other stops have all complied, you know, with our town stair ordinance where they parallel to the lake.
They'll be metal and parallel and 42 inches wide.
Right. Yeah. So if we can do that, that might be the way to go.
Okay.
But again, if it's going to, but if it's going to be disability access, maybe it needs to be a ramp, and again, that'd probably be a good excuse for variance, so.
Okay.
Got a couple of ways to go there, yeah.
Okay. So. Yeah, we have talked about possibly the Park Board getting a wheelchair that can go down to the beach. That's also in the works. That's it for the Park Board. Their next meeting is the fourth Tuesday of April.
And Community Center?
Community Center met on 4/31. We had a discussion regarding the wall hangings. Now that the hallway's been painted, so we'll be working on that tomorrow. Melanie is working on outdoor signage. We had a lengthy discussion regarding the Community Center capital budget and the need to update the existing document. We discussed possible rental of the courtyard for a rehearsal dinner for a wedding. And June 3rd to the 6th, they'll be shooting a movie in Room 12. That's it. Any questions?
Okay. Budget and Finance?
Budget and Finance, our Budget and Finance meeting is usually the week before the Town Council meeting. In this case, it was pushed until this Wednesday, the 12th. So I don't have anything to report about our meeting because it's two days from now. I will tell you, we've been working on, we had an upgrade from K Plus, our software provider and hardware maintenance group. That created some problems, like most software upgrades, but we're working through that. Civic, our software system that we use for most of the town finances, that was moved to the cloud. So a little bit of changes there, but we're getting through that. Horizon Bank, we're about ready to move funds to higher rate return CDs. We have not done that yet because of the other two aforementioned items, but the Horizon thing will happen later this month. All of this has caused a little bit of struggle with our positive pay system. That is where every check that we write, we have to go back into the Horizon system every single day and state whether we want that check to be paid or not. And for reasons I can't completely explain, some of those checks have gotten missed. Either that's from my own fault, people who work for me, which again, my fault. But some of that is because of our software upgrades. I talked to our Horizon representative this evening before the meeting, and we have a scheduled time tomorrow to address this. I think we're going to suspend the positive pay system until we get our software straightened out so we can avoid any problems with checks not being cleared through our system. Otherwise, our Budget and Finance meeting, as I mentioned, is Wednesday, April 12th at 8:30 AM. Thank you.
Okay. Human Resources, Mary Lou.
Human Resources, I already talked about that we did hire a lady for the department and she started a couple of weeks ago and she's in training with Lynn. Lynn will be doing some special projects, which we'll talk about later with the vacant lots. We also had a request from the Part-Time Building Commission Secretary, who now has been here a year and is requesting a pay increase of 5%. Our past history will show that we haven't looked at those unless it's the ordinance that we do in the fall. So I did a little research. We hired a part-time BZA secretary that was hired in 2016 and they did not receive an increase until 2022 because they were well within the range. And that person was hired making more than our deputy clerk at that time. We also have a police administrator that made less than the Part-Time Building Commission Secretary all last year. We did take care of that. That was called an outlier. So I would, my recommendation is that we wait until the ordinance in the fall if we give an increase.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All favor say aye.
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 And we did not, we did not meet in the month of April, and I'm not sure if we'll meet in May. We'll see if we have something, but I noticed later on, we will talk about performance appraisals, which is part of the HR, and we'll give an update on that. So that's all I have for Human Resources. But we always meet the first Thursday of the month and it's at 1:30.
Okay. Tree Board, Ellen, I think I see you on Zoom.
Ellen's on Zoom.
I am here. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, I hear you.
Okay. I presented at the last board meeting and this, we met on Wednesday and we talked about all of the red line corrections that Chris sent us and made some changes, and I'm in the process of updating all that and getting it back to you, Chris. And my goal is to have a completed ordinance for the Town Council by the next meeting for something for you to go over and to sign. And that's all we talked about. We had a very short meeting on Wednesday, so that's all I have to report. Our next meeting is May 3rd and that's it. So, any questions?
Thank you, Ellen.
Great, thanks, Ellen. All right, Building Commission, actually I wasn't here for the last council meeting, so there's actually three meetings. One on 210, which is now kind of ancient history, one on 222, where we discussed the situation with beach stairs. Decision was made to send letters to people who have stairs that we feel are not complying either with FEMA regulations or with our stair ordinance. Those letters hopefully will be sent out soon. And then we had a meeting on 324. We had a lot of permit applications that were incomplete or not gotten in on time, but otherwise nothing controversial was really decided. And next meeting will be this Friday at 1:00 PM. Any questions? Board of Zoning Appeals, met on 214. The Duffy House at the corner of Hazeltine and Okenwald received a variance for their beach shed. Advisory Plan Commission did not have a meeting, and whether we have a meeting a week from tonight is still to be determined. We'll see if we have any issues to discuss. Building Permit Revenue Report.
Building, excuse me, Building Permit Revenue Report for March 2023, 23 permits totaling $557,939 with revenue of $6,957. Six electric permits issued totaling $1,009. One street cut permit to Nipco for $100. Legal expenses paid in March totaling $8,187.50 to Bragee, Nelson, and Janes. Lobbyist fees totaling $6,250 paid to the courting group. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Is there a second?
I second it.
Discussion, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Dr., may I apologize, just for the record, for whatever reason, the Zoom app stopped working, so I'm going to have to reboot the Zoom meeting and we'll have to apologize to everybody when they rejoin. For whatever reason, it just dropped on its own.
I did have some feedback and I just said Mark's working on it.
And for those of you that are maybe waiting for the opening of the vehicle bids, that's already been completed. If you came to the meeting just a few minutes late, we've opened them. And just to kind of recap, the police vehicle went for $5,000 and $23,000 on the Suburban. And we'll contact both of those people tomorrow.
So Chris, what's the legal issue with Zoom not working? Can we continue?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's not a requirement.
All right. All right. So unfinished business, draft of ordinance pertaining to vacant lots. Chris tells me that there's no need for this because the present ordinance says that...
Let's, I want to clarify. There's a few issues with regards to the questions that came up regarding that ordinance. So there are some issues that do not require.
Okay.
Been working with Mary Lou and Lynn in the Water Department, so we anticipate having an ordinance and we need a little more information from Carl potentially and to get some things decided on before the Public Works Committee. So there will be an ordinance, there has to be some updates if any changes are made, but with regard to vacant lots and some of the charges that were discussed, there isn't anything. So you have some of the information and not all of it there.
Okay.
In my emails.
So it needs to be tabled for now and brought back?
Yeah, actually, there's nothing to be tabled. We'll have a form of ordinance and a public hearing to propose, so it'll just be added as an agenda item.
Hey, Mark, the internet's going and phones too. So I think you got to prep on the network.
They said it froze up on the Tree Board.
It's not for me, so I don't. Mine's not showing. It should be. You showing it? It's actually pretty fast, maybe because all you have to do is... You've probably got one of those secret government sites.
Yeah, no, mine's working too. Okay.
I had word from Deanna and she wondered, want to know what happened. I told her Mark's working on it.
And at worst, if we need to, we can link.
Okay. So the vacant lot ordinance will send to next month.
Yes.
Stop 17 and 18 Stormwater Infrastructure Project, it says set public meeting date. John? John.
So the Stormwater Infrastructure Project, as most of you know, I think everybody knows, you know, that the local property owner at Stop 17, we don't have a public access, meaning we don't own property that runs to the lake. We do have a town-owned line that goes to the lake with a structure at the top that's very inadequate. It's got a bunch of different kinds of pipe in it. We proposed a solution to that problem two years ago, which the homeowner was not amenable to, that was going to take down a bunch of old trees, so we decided not to go that route. Since that time, we've worked on some preliminary engineering, which I think I've shared with everybody in terms of cost structures. The problem we had was because of supply chain issues and potential contractor pricing, we don't know until we bid it exactly what it would cost. But right now, there's such a wide range between the low estimate and the high estimate of like $400,000. So the project could conceivably cost 400, or it could conceivably cost 800. So right now, what we did was we told him to get a proposal letter together for us so that we could tighten up the final engineering and get it out for bids. The issue tonight is that proposal that I sent to you guys from Haas and Associates has line items for, you know, construction engineering in the event we do the project and administrative costs for the project, but it also has two line items that essentially get us to the point where we can bid it. And that's approximately 37 or so thousand dollars. What that means is it would be the final engineering on the project and also the bid process. Right now, the bid schedule that we're anticipating would start sometime around May with the pre-bid meetings, and that he would have his final engineering done by then, which is only a few weeks away. Then we would bid the project in June, more than likely.
Reporting in progress.
We would not allow construction during the summer because it would be pretty hairy. There's going to be a half a dozen structures going in along Lake Shore Drive. So the intent would be then to bid it in June, start construction after Labor Day, and then give them that year to do the work. It's probably only a couple of months worth of work, but it'll give them that flexibility. So that's where we stand tonight. I'd like to entertain them, I mean, I make the motion that we spend, I think if we put it not to exceed 40, is probably 40,000 is probably the way to look at it. Again, this will be stormwater funding out of our stormwater fund, which I believe has about 280 in it right now, I think. Mark, do you remember?
That's correct. And then the outlay for this year, they anticipate another 200,000 to come in.
So the hope is that even with spending the 40 on the bidding and the engineering, final engineering and bidding, we would still have enough money in the fund to pay for the low end of the price range. In the event we don't have enough in the fund for that by fall, or, you know, when we anticipate having to spend the dollars, we may have to entertain the thought of maybe using some of our surplus, our money, or find some other additional funds. We won't know how much until we bid it. So my recommendation, my motion is that we authorize Haas to proceed on the final engineering and bid to the tune of $40,000, not to exceed.
Can I ask a question on that? I'm a resident nearby on 18. But my question is, does this project benefit more than one resident? Is it one individual who's flooding, or is there a bunch?
No, that's a good question, Tim. So essentially, in terms of the global 30,000 view of Stop 17, because of the Lake Shore Drive sewer project and some of the other things we've asked Haas to do over the years, they have topography of back in Moon Valley and that whole area there. So if you can imagine, if you go up into Story and Blanks, all of that drains down into that sump right there. Seventeen is basically a sump for that whole area, meaning way back into Moon Valley. Now granted, there's property improvements in between all that, but essentially, it's a one big, great, big hole. Now, Dr. Zafar's house sits in, it was built very low in the ground, but it does sit basically at the confluence of all that drainage. So not only is that affected, but if you remember, if you go down Lake Shore Drive on the south side of the road, there's lots of parking areas that are flooded. The structures that are in some of those areas that are town-owned structures in our right-of-way are very inadequate. It's old structure. The whole motivation for doing that stormwater fund was to get money so we could improve those things rather than just putting Band-Aids on them. And we've done that as we've marched through the, we've been blessed with the community grant projects that have paid for 75% of that. Now, we're going to have to try to improve a lot of that drainage on Lake Shore in anticipation of, you know, doing a CCMG project for Lake Shore Drive probably in '25 or '26. So it will correct the drainage for that whole area then, basically from about halfway between 16 and 17, which is where it starts, all the way back to 18. And then it'll take, if you're familiar with the jagga or the topography down there, the elevations down there, at 19, it all comes to 18 as well. So the thought is, we put some structures in there, channel the water, get it down, and essentially, right now, he hasn't finished the design at 18, but essentially, then it'll go overland through a rock garden sort of a thing, much as it does now. So it really won't change too much at 18, other than we may have to put some additional rock in there, and then it'll disperse its way down to the lake from there. This is 100-year event kind of thing. It's not going to always need to be used in its full potential, but we're kind of trying to anticipate the long term.
Thank you. That's a great explanation. And my reason for asking it is mainly, I mean, yes, I live at 18, and I'm not worried about my, you know, it changing. It is what it is. But my, I was taken aback frankly by the cost. And I was walking my dog this morning by Zafar's house, and I looked, and yes, he is a bit in a hole there. And unfortunately, there's no Stop 17. That's ancient history. I guess we sold that back in the day. But for all this money, I was looking at it, thinking as I drank my coffee, is there not a way to buy some of that land back? Could the town not open Stop 17 again for all this money and then run a drain down 17? And then the people who live around there have a beach to go to? That would, I mean, maybe that's pie in the sky stuff, but for 700 grand or whatever... Thank you. For all that money, I thought maybe it's worthwhile looking at other options. Not to say that this is a bad one, but maybe there's other ones. That's all.
I don't have a problem with forward-thinking in terms of what we want to do with beach access. I have no idea what the property would be worth if we tried to get a 40-foot furnace on Lake Shore Drive for a stop. I got to believe it's going to be pretty close to what you're talking about. We can look at that in the future. My problem, one of the problems is, as you know, Mr. Rizzi's been very patient. I mean, this thing has been a situation for probably eight to 10 years, and he's basically tried to talk a couple of different, Bob can speak to this better than I can, but he's talked to a couple of different administrations and tried to get this problem solved. We're not the sum total of his problems. He's got his own problems. But if we take some of that street drainage away from him and the other homeowners in that area, it's going to relieve a lot of what he's experiencing. So I don't like the idea. That pipe down there is segmented. We cambered it, and it's got lots of different kinds of material in there. If it ever breached from 100-year event and flooded his whole operation there, we'd spend more than 700,000. So I think it's prudent for us, I think, to get the bid done, figure out exactly what we're talking about, and then make those kinds of decisions at that point. If we can't afford it, we'll have to backpedal anyway. But my thought would be, we're going to kill a lot of birds with this stone, I think.
Okay.
Not to shoot your idea down, I just think that's a long-term thing. I don't have a problem looking at that in the future at all, but...
Thank you.
So there was a motion, was there a second?
I don't think so. I'll second it.
Okay, there's a second now. Any other discussion? So the motion is to spend up no more than $40,000 to get the bid process going. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Stop 29 project invoice from Woodbridge &amp; Son. Did we get an invoice?
I actually, believe it or not, I met with Bruce today. We've been, you know, on the one hand, it's sad that it's taken this long. On the other hand, we've been using his money for two years anyway. He's assured me we're going to have a, we're going to have the negotiation with the 29 guys and get everything put to bed, hopefully within the next, certainly within the next 30 days. I hope to do that in the next couple of weeks. We may need a little assistance from you at some point. We do have an agreement with those guys currently, a written agreement. And then this negotiation, we're going to have to have relative to the expenditure at 29. So we did make some progress.
So John, you've said in prior meetings that this is covered from a GoFund account?
Mary Lou, we got, I'm trying to remember exactly, it was about a million-dollar Go bond. We spent almost everything except 100 or so.
Oh, I was told by Helen it's depleted.
Sorry?
I was told by Helen there is nothing left in that Go.
Well, that's because the prior clerk treasurer spent some money from that fund for other expenditures that should not have been spent on. So there was money that was spent on park department stair improvements that came out of that fund that should not have. Now, Tim and I have had conversations in prior, and I think you all are aware of this, I hope, because we've had some public comment on it, but we've talked about the fact that that Go bond fund was used for things that it shouldn't have been, and we needed to reconcile that. So, I mean, I know we haven't maybe necessarily done it yet, but that...
It was. I don't have the finances around that right now. I can prepare that for Wednesday's meeting, but yes.
Okay. So Tim will bring it to the budget meeting?
Yeah, Mary Lou. My understanding is there should be, you know, six figures left once we reconcile what was spent on, what it should not have been spent on.
Okay.
Dr. Lemay?
Yep.
If I may add, Zoom is back online. I apologize to those that are on Zoom. We had an internet connection, and hopefully, we are back up and running.
Great.
And they didn't miss much.
That's right. IworkQ software update, so the building commission had recommended IworkQ. They gave us a contract. Contract said that if there's a disagreement, that it gets settled in a court in Utah?
Then it was Utah, but they've agreed to remove that.
Okay, so, and then the other issue was if there is a disagreement, we'd like to have the loser of that disagreement pay for the attorney costs. They wouldn't agree to that. So we said at the last meeting, we wanted to get more input from other municipalities. Larry Wall told me yesterday that they contacted four other municipalities, all of which were in favor. They were very positive on IworkQ. We have a total of seven municipalities now that are just thrilled with IworkQ. And in fact, one of them was very unhappy with, I forget which one.
They were happy with Beacon.
Yeah, they weren't happy with Beacon. So I think, given that, I would suggest that, I'd make a motion that we sign the IworkQ software contract. Any other discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
New business.
We can move down to public hearing.
Public hearing, and actually, there's two agenda items that are actually the same. Public hearing dash park board, additional appropriation of $77,000. And then resolution 2023 dash blank to make an additional appropriation to address a budget error resulting in underfunding of the park board. So I think we've all seen the resolution. I would make a motion that we vote in favor of the resolution.
You need to open a public hearing.
Oh, we have to have a public hearing. That's why it said public hearing. Okay. All right, so I'll open the public hearing regarding the resolution 2023 dash zero, which I believe was published on the website, right?
It was published in the newspaper, public as required.
Okay. Anybody want to speak in favor of it?
In favor?
In favor.
Okay.
Anybody want to speak against it? Oh, we got one in favor. Stay on your toes.
Anita Remages, 2300, I'm in favor of the appropriation.
Great. Anybody want to speak against it? I'll close the public hearing? What? Oh, yep.
I didn't read the news. I didn't...
You have to say who you are and your address.
I'm Dave Latell, 2520 Oriole Trail. I didn't read the newspaper particulars about this. Could somebody explain to me generally what's resolved or what happened?
Yeah, when the budget came out, the budget for the park board got shorted by $77,000, so they aren't able to do the things that they typically would do. And they have plans to do a lot of things to help the town, and so this is to try and correct that.
So it's not an additional amount, it's just something that we didn't get in the original budget. So it would be their normal budgets. What they, they submitted that in August. And for some reason, it didn't get downstate, so that's why we had to have a special meeting for them. So they're not asking for any more than they asked for last year.
Okay, and what happened to that $77,000? Was that appropriated somewhere else, or?
I don't, I'm not on that. It just wasn't, it just wasn't applied.
Allocated, okay, great. Thank you.
So they're not going on a trip to Hawaii or anything, the park board, or?
No, I'm sure, I'm sure that's not the case. I just was curious where, what happened with the money.
I'm happy that you asked, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I'll make a motion.
Well, let's see if there's anybody else who want to make comments.
Anybody else want to make a comment against on Zoom? All right, now I'll close the public hearing. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2023 dash blank.
I second it.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Great. So we'll get that signed.
Okay.
All right. Notice to proceed with Millstone Contractors North regarding the CCMG grant. I think everybody has seen that also. I'll make a motion to allow me to sign this. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that?
Discussion.
Is that Stop 29?
No, this is the CCMG.
CCMG.
Stop 29 Beach Survey, the park board was authorized to go ahead with that, Mary Lou, a little while ago.
Yeah, we already did that one.
Okay, well, we're...
We're down to the one below that. Notice to proceed.
Oh, okay, got it. For milestone.
So there's a motion and a second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, I'll get that signed before tonight's over. Healy Landscape Leaf Pickup Estimate $5,000. Has that not already been approved?
Actually, I think, Dr. Lemay, it's more informational than anything. The funds are already in the leaf removal fund. There are adequate funds to cover the $5,000 estimate from Healy's Landscaping, which consists of a crew at $1,000 per day for five days consisting of a week, and it's the same commitment that we had in previous years with Healy's. So I would recommend that we continue that relationship with that vendor.
Yep. Okay, and I think, so we, but that's already been approved, right?
He said it was in...
It's in his budget.
Okay, so we don't need to do it. Okay, Stormwater Drain on St. Lawrence, request to clean and examine.
So there's a drain that runs, basically, it takes the stormwater from... Oh, this is the core, I'm sorry. So there's a drain that runs from basically up here at the town hall and the parking areas down to the lake. It picks up a couple of other structures on the way. Anybody that was around about 12 or 15 years ago, they did a great big improvement down at the Lake Shore Drive end of that line so that it goes into the lake. We actually tied some of the Stop 24 improvements into that line two years ago when we did that project. But essentially, there are some areas where it doesn't drain quite as well as it should. It needs to be cleaned. It's above and beyond. We sometimes get some help from Michigan City and their sanitary, they brought their sanitary district, they brought one of their rod trucks over here, and we tried to clean it out ourselves. Tom had them in there. We weren't successful. We did get it to clear a little bit and drain better, but we do realize that we have potential blockage in there, more than likely roots. So it's a concrete line, it's a large line that we need to get cleaned out. So we had Tom contacted National Power Rotting, which is an outfit that does the more significant drain work for big operations, big commercial operations. They've provided a quote to us. They have an hourly rate, so it starts off with a minimum amount of about 4,000 with an hourly rate of 950. I would imagine we should be able to get that thing cleared with about a half-day's operation, so we're probably looking at, I think if we authorize about 5,000 not to exceed, we should be able to get that thing done. Again, we can use stormwater fees. Go ahead, Mark.
I would maybe recommend we go slightly higher than that because Tom did indicate they may have to bring more than one truck. They may come at it from both ends, just because we want to prevent anything that we're moving from going towards the lake, so...
Right, okay. So...
I would say maybe not to exceed $9,000.
Okay. I meant that motion to me, 9,000 for not to exceed for National Power Rotting to do the drain work through the Stop 24 drain line.
Any other discussion? All favor say aye.
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 Okay, Holiday Construction Group, second invoice, $96,255. I'll make a motion that we pay that.
I thought the bill was supposed to be 40,000 this month.
There was a couple of things that happened, Mary Lou. One of the things that happened was the HVAC contractor was able to secure what they call an RTU, which is one of the HVAC or heating units on the market, instead of having to one of the HVAC or heating units on the market, instead of having to wait for delivery, which everybody is aware, the supply chain issues have been horrendous this year. Rather than wait for that, he moved that up and actually purchased it last month. So that, that was about a $40,000 addition. I think that may be what you're thinking to the original invoice that they sent. In addition to that, the, the additional design changes and things that we've been implementing incurred some additional costs from the engineer and the architect. So the total came up to 96. I apologize for that. Originally, we thought that second invoice was going to be somewhere around 25 or 30. But again, you know, we hate to limit these guys in terms of keeping thing, keeping the ball rolling. So the fact that Carl tells us that we could have proceeds as early as, I think he said four weeks when he was talking to us. So that would mean we'd have bond proceeds if we, if we stay on that schedule in May, which means this would be the last invoice we'd have to pay out of town funds. The bonds then would cover anything that we've expended to date as well as any future expenditures.
Could I just make a comment? We don't have a sewer permit yet. We don't have a building permit for this project. And we haven't seen final plans for the project. And here we're spending 100, $150,000 and we don't even know if we can build it. And so can we get everything together first and then start spending money?
I mean. We, we can do whatever you want, John. We, we've talked about this ad nauseam. We've spent months on this.
And we don't have a building permit. We don't have a sewer permit. And we don't have the final plans. What is so hard about this? It's like paying your contractor to build your house and you don't know what he's building. I mean.
If you don't know what it's building, John, you should pay attention to what's going on. Pay attention, you'll know what's going on.
We've seen pictures of everything, John, but we don't have the final plans. And it's as simple as that.
Well, we, you were told when we first started the process.
Well, then let's get our.
Well, if you want to jump up and down and scream and yell, we can do that. If you want to talk intelligently about where we stand today and how we got here, I'll be glad to run that narrative for you.
I would like to see a building permit and a sewer permit.
The reason, I told you at the fire commission meeting a few nights ago, the reason we don't have a building permit is we did not want to present 30% drawings to the building commission and then have to come back and change them. We've just finalized the site plan in the last progress meeting. They're going along with, with the rest of the engineering. So we will have final drawings very shortly. We didn't want to go to the building commission without drawings that reflected the actual project. We didn't feel like that was fair to the building commission to give them version A and then come back with version D two months later. So that's why we didn't approach the building commission. And I explained all this to you the other night.
You can explain it.
Can you let me finish, please?
Sure.
Okay. So that's the one issue you brought up. You brought up three or four things. If you want to have them addressed, I'll address them. If you want to scream and yell, we can do that, too. I don't have a problem screaming and yelling. I'm real good at that. But essentially, the reason we didn't go to the building commission is what I just described. I, I've told you on a number of occasions, in terms of the septic permit, we contacted the, the Lapeur County Health Department back when we first started the design process back in the summer. We talked to Amanda. We gave her the preliminary ideas of what we were doing in the, in the ensuing months, now that we finalized what we're doing with the building, whether we could even deal with the elevations that we're dealing with. The plan is to use the existing lift station. We told that to her back in the spring and the summer. In the last few weeks, we've presented to the Indiana Department of Health, which is down in Indianapolis, a revised scheme of what we're trying to accomplish, which they require. He's in the process of reviewing that. He will kick that back to the local health department, meaning Amanda, and then they will give the final determination. Amanda has told us in the ensuing months that as long as the Indiana Department of Health is okay with us using that existing system, that she'll be okay with that. So we've made progress on that front. It takes time, you know, going down to Indianapolis, as you've, you've made mention about the health, for the country clubs' problems with septic permits, they've had similar issues. So it takes time to make these things happen. We made a conscious decision as a council to proceed on this dual track so that we could not lose the opportunity of the pricing that we were given on the bid process back in the fall. We didn't want to lose that pricing advantage. If we didn't keep the project moving on the dual track, meaning figure out where we're going to get the money from, and then keep the construction process moving in order to capture the numbers that we were given so that we didn't go over our budget, we decided to do it on this dual track method. And that's what we've continued to do. So in terms of this particular invoice and why the, why we're paying these invoices, I've told you from the beginning that there would be some costs that the town would have to front if we didn't continue to get, if we couldn't get the bond process. Now, we're certainly within our rights to stop the project. And I, and I warned you in prior council meetings, if that's what you all want to do, we can do that. But you're going to incur some costs. If you, if you put the brakes on, that means any ordering or anything else that's going on. By the way, the building was ordered already under our instructions to keep the project moving. So there hasn't, you know, in terms of transparency and what we've taught, we've talked about this on various occasions about why we're doing what we're doing and how we're doing it. So if we decide to put the brakes on, as you're suggesting, if we do that, you're going to incur the costs of what this contractor's already expended. So I don't think that's a wise move. I think we all made a conscious decision to move this project forward. It's a little unorthodox, I'll grant you that. But I don't see any other way to do it and keep this thing on track so we don't incur a bunch of different costs impacts in, as this thing moves forward. In addition to that, if we push the schedule forward too far, now we have the fire department that has nowhere to stay if we knock the building down. Tom's got his plows that he's got, and I think we explained this last time. We have to have the street department give us some space in their garage. And if we don't do that before winter, then we're going to have the fire trucks and the plows to deal with internally, or rather, in terms of storage. So we didn't want to do that either. So we're trying to keep this thing on schedule. So that's why we are where we are. If there's anything else that I forgot that you brought up, then bring it up again and I'll try to answer it for you.
Okay, so we have a motion. So far, it hasn't been seconded to pay the second invoice. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No.
So three to two, it passes. Okay. Next agenda item, positive pay. So the town once again has bounced a check, this time to Acme Communications for $778. I agree, we probably need to stop doing the positive pay plan at Horizon Bank. You know, that plan requires that the clerk's office pay attention to what checks need to be approved. And if they're not paying attention, this is what happens. Given the fact that this has happened again, I agree, I think we need to get rid of the positive pay system. However, that means that checks need to be written for things that we want to pay for and not for things that we don't want to pay for. So if we can do that, then I think getting rid of positive pay makes some sense. But somebody at the clerk's office needs to pay attention to what they're doing. That's all I have to say about this.
We do pay attention. And we, and as I mentioned a little while ago, the problem with positive pay has been a result of some of our software upgrades. I do think that we've had one or two instances where it slipped through the cracks. Someone was on vacation. Somebody didn't see it. It's a day-to-day thing. But believe me, we pay attention and we will pay attention and will continue to pay attention. So, but suspend positive pay, I would agree with until we have our software figured out. Thank you.
The only comment I would make was, I think the, the reasoning behind the positive pay, and I think Mike knows more about this than I do, so he's probably more apt to comment or have a better comment than I. But my understanding of the positive pay was, we had issues where we were concerned, and I think there was even some fraudulent checks that were doctored and some money came out of our town account. That was, I think that was the motivation for the positive pay, meaning that the bank wouldn't pay anything until we authorized a list of checks on some periodic basis that meant that that money was legitimately due to come out of our account. So I think that was the reason behind the positive pay.
I think the reason for the positive pay was we had a, had a payment made to a solicitation for a website. And why that got paid, I don't know. I get solicitations all the time at my house. I never pay them.
But I think this, this went beyond that, though. This was, I think, some checks that were doctored. They were.
Right. We, we wrote a check to the cordon group and, and they were calling that they never received it. And there was a outcry about how we should reissue the check and how we didn't ever make the check out to them. And once we showed that we did write the check, we did some investigation and found out the check was actually stolen and altered by the thief and cashed. And in the meantime, we did write another check to the cordon group. And then finally, we received a refund for the check that was fraudulently cashed. So it, it was the start of an $8,700 fraudulent act with one of our checks. And there was, the intent was to prevent that from ever happening again. What happened, though, is we've had, we've upgraded software. It's a, it's a labor-intensive thing to look at it, which we do, but I guess one or two maybe slipped under, through the cracks. And I think Mike had a suggestion that maybe we should have a threshold where under $2,000 they get approved automatically. We haven't explored that yet. As I said, I have a meeting with Horizon tomorrow to address this. But given the amount of discussion around positive pay, I frankly would just like to suspend it. And God forbid, we don't have another fraudulent check thief out there that will put us in this situation. But I think the choice presents itself so, so that we should just suspend it for now and go back to how it was. So that would be my recommendation.
I got to ask, how would positive pay have prevented the check? You would, you would have approved the check to cordon group. So that got stolen. Positive pay didn't have any influence on that at all. We paid a bill for, for an ad.
Yeah, the guy who stole it changed who the check was made out to. So it would have come through as being made out to somebody else.
You know, I hate to throw out the baby with the bathwater. If the positive paycheck is a problem because of our software updates, and that's going to be solved shortly, maybe we need to talk about this at the budget and finance meeting. But if the positive pay has some benefit for us long-term, and the only problem we've had recently has something to do with software implementation, then maybe we should not just throw it all out right away. I, I don't have a problem with suspending it. And I don't even know if we need any motion for that. But if, if we can at least make sure we're not throwing out the baby with the bathwater here. If that system is good, and Mike, I don't know, do you know enough about that to comment?
Well, the, the whole nature of it is to protect a company against exposure on a check that, as we've already mentioned, has been altered or the payee has been replaced by another name or whatever the case may be. And it's, it's a common product. It's been a product in the banking industry forever. And again, the comment that Tim made was perhaps we should dollar discriminate, meaning if we felt that we were more concerned of our exposure being over $2,000 per check, for example, you could cut it at that. So then there would be no decision making on anything that we write that's below $2,000 that'd be handled by the bank. And so when these checks are returned, just to clarify, it's not stamped "non-sufficient funds." It's stamped "refer to maker," which means that Long Beach, being the, the maker of the check, has made a decision not to pay the item. Not the bank making a decision about whether there's sufficient funds or not, just a point of clarification. So it's an administrative tool. It's there to get, to help control against exposure, if you will, on a, on a large check. And we did it because we had concerns about that. Administratively, it hasn't gone as smoothly as we'd like it to go. And we could reduce the amount of volume that we're looking at. I don't know where we dollar discriminate, cut that line. I don't know. I've not looked at the volumes or the, or the check writing, but I'm happy to do that. We can make a decision to cut it at a certain level. So that we're only mitigating larger checks with a loss of larger checks. But it's a standard product and it's been around for years.
Should, should we, Tim, and maybe we should look at this at the Wednesday meeting, maybe have a little more input from the bank as to like Mike's suggestion, if a threshold is even possible.
Yep.
And then maybe, I'm not, I guess personally, I don't care about the suspension as much as I do just throwing it away and then needing it two years from now. So maybe there's a middle ground somewhere.
I'll gather information from Horizon tomorrow during my meeting and I'll report that at the Wednesday meeting at budget and finance. And then we can decide how to proceed.
Okay. Next agenda item, resolution 2023 dash blank. Again, this is adopting the Indiana Law Enforcement Training Board's Uniform Statewide Policy on Minimum Standards for Vehicle Pursuits. Mark?
Yes. If I may, give a little bit of information on both of the resolutions that are before the council this evening. Last year, the Indiana Law Enforcement Training Board, which mandates, in accordance with every law enforcement agency across the state of Indiana, we have, we are mandated to follow their guidelines as far as our specific training that we receive each and every year, and also how we operate our police department as it relates to our policies. Therefore, the Indiana Law Enforcement Training Board has decided to come up with uniform policies across the state of Indiana. The first two uniform policies that they have established are related to two areas of very high liability. One is vehicle pursuits. Second to that is use of force. So what they are asking is for every law enforcement agency in the state to adopt these. It is not a should, it is a shall. So we have changed our internal departmental policy to reflect the policies that we receive from the Indiana Law Enforcement Training Board. Under the use of force policy, there are two areas in the new policy, which I am very pleased are in the policy. One is de-escalation. What it is asking is for us as law enforcement officers, as we enter into a situation, to first attempt to de-escalate the situation by talking to an individual using less than lethal means, then moving less than lethal. And then obviously, worst-case scenario would be an officer would be justified to use deadly force if justified under this policy. Another caveat that was added to the policy, which is talked about nationwide, is each officer, including myself, has a duty to intervene. And I'm going to read from the policy, just these two bullet points that are in our new policy. Under duty to intervene, a law enforcement officer who is present and observes another officer using force that the officer has reason to know is excessive under the circumstances, shall have a duty to intervene when it is safe and feasible to do so. Law enforcement officers who intervene shall immediately report the incident to a supervisor or commanding officer. Across the country, we see unfortunate news media stories that are out there where law enforcement officers sometimes get a little hyped up. The adrenaline's going. This here protects us as law enforcement officers and mandates us, when we arrive on scene, if we see another officer who is using excessive force, that we must intervene now. I do li, I do like that part being added. I would like to thank our town attorney, Chris Willoughby, who went to the steps of reminding me that it would be a good idea to have a resolution to adopt both of these policies as well. I know the town of Trail Creek has done so and many other communities are doing it as well. So the resolutions before you tonight only solidify and validate that we have now accepted and adopted the new policies as mandated by the Law Enforcement Training Board.
So I'll make a motion that we adopt the policy regarding minimum standards for vehicle pursuits. Is there a second?
I second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution regarding deadly force. Is there a second? Second? All favor say aye.
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 Health Savings Act, HSA, Water Department Office Manager. Mary Lou, is that you?
That's, I don't want Mark speak to that.
Okay.
The new office manager that was hired in the water department has been hired as a full-time employee and therefore is eligible for full-time employee benefits. The employee has been enrolled in the employee healthcare benefits, not only for herself, but her family. Per the town handbook, employees who are individual receive $1,750 a year. And employees who are in the family plan receive $3,500 from the town deposited into an HSA account at Horizon Bank. And looking back on previous full-time employees that have started after January 1st of the year, I did see that one other employee was given an HSA benefit. However, it was prorated, therefore taking the 3,500, dividing it by 12, and then obviously subtracting the first three months off. The employee started on March 26. So my recommendation to the council would be that the employee is in fact entitled by town handbook to the HSA, that we prorate it based on the employee's start date as of March 26th of this year.
26, 25.
So according to Mary Lou's calculations, it would be $2,625 that would be deposited into the HSA at Horizon Bank.
So moved. Is there a second?
I second it.
Any other discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Performance evaluation updates.
Chief?
Yes. As of today, all of the performance evaluations have been conducted and have been submitted. It was a learning curve for many of the supervisors. A lot of great questions came out of the process. Everyone understands now that we will have an annual performance appraisal for every employee of the town, regardless if you're full-time or part-time. Starting in 2024, the evaluations will begin January 1st, and we will ask that they be completed no later than the end of February. This year, we approved it a little bit late in the year, so we gave everybody to April 1st to get the evaluations turned in. They are submitted. I've reviewed all of them. There are no alarming reviews that are out there, and a lot of good feedback from our employees as far as goals and objectives moving forward into 2023.
Okay.
Thank you.
Workstations within the town hall, request by Tim Perry. Tim, you had some concerns?
Well, I actually asked Deanna to remove this from the agenda. I, you know, honor is in my office, in my, my space. And it's a bit crowded, but I don't know where else we'll put honor. So I'm fine with the way it is.
Okay.
Thanks, Ben.
Access to public records. So this issue we go, regards FOIA requests. In the past, whenever anybody makes a FOIA request, typically the clerk treasurer puts it all together or if the town council's emails are being requested, we go through our emails and, and everybody sends everything to our town attorney. I just think we need to make absolutely sure that that's the way it's working now. FOIA requests shouldn't go directly. FOIA requests shouldn't go directly from any of us sitting at this table to anybody making that FOIA request. They all need to go to Chris. Is that good?
Well, I think that's up to you with that decision. What I suggest is between clerk treasurer's office, myself, and the town administrator, prior to next meeting, we provide you with a summary of what's in place of the current policy by resolution. I don't really find any town code sections that are applicable. There are some other updates that are probably necessary anyway, and then you could decide and maybe hack away at the procedure there. There are certain requirements, everybody is generally aware, but timing requirements of initial responses as well as the overall responses, and some things are more ministerial and don't really take too much time or that you need to seek assistance. But we certainly need a process so that somebody doesn't come looking at the clerk treasurer or the town administrator for something, you know, ball got dropped, and mostly because somebody was trying to help or didn't know what the requirement is. So that would be my suggestion. In the meantime, we have been working, most do come through. I'm not aware of any, some do come my way for review and/or approval, especially those that are, that might be litigation-oriented. But that's my suggestion to the council, is that between the three of us, we look at the current policy in place and then make some suggestions for adoption at the next meeting.
I've got two comments. One is, I think the council should be aware of any of those types of requests in its entirety, not just whoever it was requested from, so that the council's aware if there is one of these requests, everybody's on the same page about who's requesting and what they're requesting. That's my first comment. Second of all, if it's a two-pager and it takes 10 minutes, I don't have much of a problem with that. But if it's going to take Deanna or somebody spending a half-day on some sort of information-gathering effort, then I think we, there ought to be some commensurate costs involved. And I know you've got some thoughts on that, what's allowable and what's not. But I think if we're going to have, if we're going to enter this discussion and come up with a policy, we ought to have some way to recover some of our costs in the event these things get, you know, unwieldy.
Dr. Lemay, if I may add a comment?
I've done a little bit of research, as we knew this was going to be discussed tonight, and I looked at the City of Michigan City's current request for access to public records, kind of on the heels of Councilman Wall's comments tonight. Currently, the City of Michigan City charges $0.10 per page for a standard-sized black-and-white copy, $0.25 per page for colored copies, and this is clearly indicated in the request form that they have. In addition to that, until we have sort of some new, you know, procedures and protocols in place, I would ask, as all of us have kind of discussed tonight, that once we receive them in the clerk treasurer's office, that the council, the town attorney, and my office also be CC'd in that. Because now with my involvement as a town administrator, I am receiving information and handling emails that I may have information on a certain topic that if I don't see the request for access to the public records, I may not be able to share because I wasn't aware of the actual request as well. So I would just like to be looped in as well, because I am seeing more and more contracts and information coming through my office as well. So, thank you.
So Chris, Mark, and Tim are going to get together and come up with a policy and bring it back to the next meeting?
We'll review it and confirm what's in place. A lot of it may already be covered, but I guess a reminder, plus it also protects the employees so that they're not faced with having to make some decisions and legal decisions that they're not aware of restrictions or inadvertently disclosing something that might not be disclosable under the law.
Right. And yeah, and I guess I'd like, again, that resolution to, if that is a resolution, if that's the form it takes, to include that anything that gets released goes through your office. Okay. Public comments?
I don't think it's a, I have a little bit, I'll limit it to three minutes.
Yeah. And we're going to limit to three minutes, okay?
It'll be less. My name is Donna Cavanagh, I live at Stop 21 in Long Beach since 1961. I was the private caregiver for a wonderful woman for almost five years. Family asked me to allow them to bring her in my home. Over the time I had her there, at first she was fairly normal, but she has advancing Alzheimer's. And recently, her doctor requested from the family that they move her to a nursing home where she is now in La Porte. I just want to say to the residents here, if anybody has ever gone through this, whether with a loved one or someone you're a caregiver for, it's extremely difficult. So if at any time you heard me yelling at the top of my lungs when you went past my house, it's because she's hard of hearing. And sometimes she was crawling up the wall or crawling to get out of the house, things like that. And she also was screaming and yelling at different times. So I apologize for that, if I upset anyone, but she is now safe in the brickstone in La Porte, and I was very honored to be able to take care of her. And I wanted very much, if there's any first responders here, the, I know you're always saying, John, it's okay, but what your company did and what the police did for me over almost five years to help her in and out of hospitals, ambulances, et cetera, was really remarkable for a town this size. So thank you very much.
Okay. Any other public comments?
Tim, our 1703 Lake Shore Drive. Is it the right time to speak to the stormwater thing, 17-18? Okay. Just some comments, and I appreciate you going forward with this because it's a big problem. I'm right at, right at that point, you know, and the neighbors, you know, west of me or whatever, are underwater pretty much in the street. I'm not, but they are. So whatever you do there is going to really help the people between 16 and 18. The point I wanted to make, it kind of came up when Mr. Perry mentioned something about Stop 17. I know it's an old issue, it's water under the bridge, like everybody says, but there is a homeowner's easement there, which it'd be interesting, and I have no way of researching, you know, previous town council actions and things like that, but there's a homeowner's easement where there are certain people, a Nichols Court and one house on Lake Shore Drive, can walk through 17 across that property. It'd be interesting to me and maybe to the council if Long Beach was part of that easement agreement back whenever that was done, because that's a cheaper route to go, you know. All that, all that, the water that's there, going all the way down to 18, you know, if it has to be that way, fine, but it's going to cost a lot of money, obviously, you know, when you, you probably got some figures, you know, from the engineer, a couple of different scenarios. But if you can go straight down 17 with some kind of a culvert or something. The home that's there right now is Bob Gallagher, you know, he used to come to all of these meetings, that was his house, 1700 Lake Shore Drive. The easement is like right west of his house. And if somehow Long Beach was party to that easement agreement, you might have some, you know, foot in the game to use that, you know. It's not that the property would change there, you'd be going down possibly underground, it would come out, you know, towards the beach area, and it would just save a lot of money, you know. That house, by the way, has been vacant for two years. It's a, who's the, who's the, yeah, it's the same architect that, you know, built this station or designed it, designed that particular house. But maybe just go look into it, you know. I don't know if towns are party to easement agreements between homeowners, but if you are, it might be a cheaper way to go. Thanks.
Thank you. Any others? Bob?
Hello? Hi. Bob Boyce, Stop 29. I just got a couple of questions. I know at both the March 13th and March 20th meeting, the town council was pressured to pay Holiday Construction invoices for $50,000 for design work already completed. I'm just wondering, was that invoice paid? It was?
It was.
It was paid? Well, I know Frank Lloyd Wright didn't design that building, and so I did a little research. And the true cost of that design work, according to Holiday Construction, was $27,500, not $50,000. Now, there was a moratorium put on, anything past that point until we secured financing and permits. But the remainder of the taxpayer dollars was used to secure a contract with Holiday Construction for the public safety building. And that was applied $23,510. Now, this was a deliberate misappropriation of taxpayer funds, and I'd like to see an explanation of why this happened. You don't have an explanation.
I don't owe you anything tonight, as a matter of fact.
Oh, you don't owe me nothing? You come in here, you come in here with your hat on your, you come here with your hat and your hand begging for money, and then you take an attitude like that?
You got three minutes, sir.
Well, I said all I got to say.
Okay.
Good.
I just want to remind everybody that it's public comment and not an exchange.
Any other comments? Anita.
Anita Remages, 2300 Floramont. I want to commend Chief Swistec on his time here and the people that he's retained and how he's brought people in, and thank you very much. Just to see that tonight, I had comments about Jason Yagelski and how he helped an 80-year-old neighbor of mine who probably would not have survived another hour. He had a, his blood sugar dropped incredibly low. When Jason noticed a car in a driveway in Potawatomi Park, and my neighbor was supposed to be nowhere near that, and the car was in a driveway, in the driveway up against a mulch pile, and Jason knew the owners and knew they weren't home, and he stopped. And he looked, my neighbor was, his blood sugars, Dr. Lemay, you would say, when they first measured them, were 30. So he was, he had not had long to live. And Jason just did a wonderful job reading the report because my neighbor had no idea what happened. And I just want to, you know, commend you and let Jason know. My other comment has to do with the checks that were, whether a check is returned, whether it's marked NSF, whether the letters are referred to maker. There still is not money in the account, and I'm not sure if, did the town have to pay fees on those checks that were referred to maker?
I suspect we will.
Mr. Perry?
I thought this was public comment, not a reaction.
Oh, I thought you were on your phone. Anyhow, so I just wanted to say that it seems that if, you know, the excuses, again, are someone was on vacation, we're upgrading the software, other employees, you know, there always seems to be an excuse for why this happens when actually what it seems to be is somebody's job that they need to be looking every day. And whether someone's in the state of Indiana, the state of California, I mean, if you're going to be out of town, then can't you say to someone else, well, maybe you should check? So again, if I'm a vendor and I'm dealing with the town of Long Beach and we're an established town, whether a check is returned NSF, referred to maker, however it's returned, it's not money in my account. So it's embarrassing.
Any other comments? Anybody on Zoom?
Does he need to sign this?
Council comments? Claims approval?
Town checks, 19666 to 19751 totaling $264,874.73. Water Department checks, numbers 54679 to 54692 totaling $75,093.39. March payroll, $117,695. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Tim, check number 19704 to Barnes and Thornburg, $121. Do you know what that was for?
Yep, that's clerk treasurer legal fees.
Could I see the invoice to that?
I'll be happy to email it to you, I don't have-
That'd be great. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I second it.
No, I'll entertain a motion, so you can make the motion.
Oh, I make a motion to approve.
I tricked you there, didn't I?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain just because I want to see that invoice. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Oh, yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Please sign some things, you guys, wait a minute.
Don't go away, we got stuff to sign.